As possible and okay, and I'll turn it over to uh to Mike.
Uh, thank you Chair Morris. Um, I'd like to call door to the Program Achievement Committee, May May eleventh, twenty twenty one. Um, are there any amendments to the agenda? Uh, I don't see any. Um, I'd like to approve the agenda. Do I have a seconder? Okay, Leo Boland, thank you. Are there any conflicts of interest? Again, I don't see any. Thank you. Um, to proceed, uh, our first, uh, item on the agenda, the experiential learning report. Like to, uh, ask Steve Locke to, uh, to, uh, to give Peter the go ahead to, uh, review this report.
Okay, very much. Um, I'm really happy to have Pete Burnett with us today. Pete's the experiential learning leader and he's going to, uh, share some of the great work that they've been doing in the system this year. Um, I just want to say how how proud I am and impressed I am with all of our staff. You know, despite, uh, challenging circumstances this year, they've continued to provide great learning experiences to kids and we've seen examples of that, uh, I think in these meetings month after month, and I think we're going to see some more examples today. And so without any further ado, Pete, I will turn it over to you.
Great, thanks Steve and 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 thanks everybody for having me again. It's it's an honor. I bet the fireworks in the background is a bit of a celebration, uh, because I I really feel like every time we get a chance to present to the trustees, it it feels like that because as Steve pointed out, there's always great things to report back. And I I think I think about experiential learning in particular over these last couple of years and and you sort of without really knowing what's happening, you might be inclined to say it's just probably not happening, right? It's just probably too hard right now. When we're working from home and people are afraid to go out of their houses and afraid for contact and uh, and yet I hope you'll see in these next fifteen or twenty minutes, maybe twenty-five minutes, we'll see, um, that there's really great things happening. I'm kidding, I'll I'll try to be brief. But I think you'll, um, I think you'll appreciate the work that's happening in the system. Um, one thing that I'll say sort of in in the forefront of all of this is that, um, we, you know, we work really hard behind the scenes, but our our fantastic educators have been, you know, pedal to the metal really as as much as they can, you know, for these last number of years and certainly even through the remote learning. And so we've got some examples to share of just how that's happening, uh, in our remote classes as well. So I think maybe the easiest thing for me to do would be to, um, to share my screen. Um, you may have received even just a quick nod. Has everybody received the slide deck? Or will that be happening at some point?
That that will be shared shortly, uh, Peter. I just wanted to, um, make sure you had the opportunity to to start off.
Yeah, I appreciate that John. That's probably better as well. So I'll go through the slide deck and there if depending on time, I may not get through it all, but there will be a chance for you to click on some of the links that I'll highlight anyway as we go. So let me share my screen. Okay, can everybody see their faces now on my screen as well?
Yep, good to go.
We're good to go, okay. Got ahead of myself here. Go back to my opening slide so as not to give away too too much. So I can't see faces, so please unmute and, um, and ask me questions as we go. Uh, I've got my full screen up and it's all on the on the slide deck, so I just want to make sure that I'm I'm doing this, um, you know, as best I can. So, uh, I've been asked to share the experiential learning over these last, uh, this last year and in fact, I want to take it back to a couple of years. So those of you that have seen me present, uh, over the last couple of years on experiential learning, you'll see a little bit of repeat, but I'm going to try to do it a little differently this year. And you'll notice partly unjust, but partly not. We've got our opening slide here where we said experiential learning and we've slashed it out and we've put the word inspired in there. And that's done very intentionally. Not to say that experiential learning isn't a thing. It is a thing. It's just such an important part of what we consider good learning, good teaching, that, um, and it folds so nicely into our inspired learning document that over the course of this year, what we really tried to do was embed the two, was to marry the two concepts together and really demonstrate how the experiential part of our inspired learning document is really engaging for students. And so you'll see that as we kind of go through. I always like to start off these presentations by saying, uh, like, why do we do experiential learning? Why? Why is that something that the ministry, our board and our educators feel, uh, should be a an important part of of what we do? You'll recognize some of these quotes. Um, I won't go through them all. They're all pulled right from our inspired learning document, which is, uh, is is modern, it's relevant, and these are our kids, our educators and our parents providing this voice for us. Um, you know, students comment on the fact that they like to have choices. And when they're given choice, it inspires them. When that choice leads to engaging our community members, it's even more powerful. Um, kids are solving problems and they're feeling like they're doing things. Uh, another comment about students getting a chance to work on projects they're interested in, that they're really passionate about. We have that educator voice talking about the development of global competencies. And again, this was part of our inspired learning document, but I but with with the experiential component being a big part of what we do, um, I I felt it was relevant. This is the reason we do it. We want to make sure that we're engaging our students. We want to make sure that when those kids go home and report to their parents what's happening, that there's some excitement in their voice. And and when when the students see that authenticity and the parents are reporting back to us that that's what they're getting from their students, that's really exciting and that's really powerful. The experiential learning cycle really is this this sort of three levels to it, right? There's students are given a chance to participate in something. Ideally, it's something hands-on. Ideally, there's a community connected partner associated with it, but our students are participating. They're doing. They're not just sitting back and receiving information. They're active applicants of the of the process. They're active participants of the process. At the end of that, they get a chance to reflect on it. And that reflection piece is really important because, uh, when students reflect on their learning, then it has power for them. They can think about what it's meant to them and then they can apply that learning. Right? They reflect on their experience that they just participated in and they apply that to any future endeavors. And that cycle is really very crucial for lots of different learning for sure. And certainly it's embedded in the experiential learning. So I want to talk very quickly about, um, our our system plan. It started three years ago. Uh, and in that, um, in that, that was with the first year for the experiential learning lead position, although experiential learning happened long before that as well. But we want to move beyond the three years. So in our first three years, we kind of created, uh, these nine areas that we wanted to flush out over the three years. And I don't have to go through them point by point. I've actually covered these already in past reports. But from started with developing the committee to sort of create that that board vision and start thinking about PD, right through to helping educators, helping administrators, um, making sure that everybody saw alignment with experiential learning and other board initiatives. We wanted to make sure that people, uh, knew that they were going to be supported financially. And so we put together calls for proposals over these last three years. And some of the work that's come in has just been remarkable. Um, we celebrated the the learning of students with hashtags like RCDSB hashtag RCSP experiential learning. Uh, classrooms were were creating videos and sharing them with parent councils and there was hashtags on Twitter and a- and, um, it's just been really great to see and celebrate some of the the work that's happening in our schools, especially when that work is demonstrating the engagement and the enthusiasm of students. Um, really, really great stuff. I think moving forward though, um, we want to be very intentional with how we plan uh, exp- experiential learning because truly the more we're in this, the more we recognize that experiential learning is inspired learning. To the to the to the point of that, this year when we just issued our call for proposals, we actually asked teachers to make sure that they show us that link. We wanted them to get into our inspired learning document and demonstrate for us how, uh, their proposed project connected to that inspired learning document. Uh, the the image that you see on the left here is a task planning, uh, uh, template. And we wanted, uh, teachers in the past to be, when they're planning out their lessons, to be thinking about, um, you know, those four key elements. And we we we've been talking about this since our, the start of our NPDL work in our board. We wanted to roll it into and marry it to the experiential learning piece. And now that you'll see that and you'll recognize that as an important part of our inspired learning framework as well. So uh, who are the potential partners for this experience? Um, what does the optimal learning space look like for our students? How can we use technology effectively? And really, what are the instructional approaches or the or the teaching practices that we need to think about? Any pre-teaching, et cetera, that will help our students get the most out of this experience? You'll notice in the center of that initial graphic, and again, this graphic was created last year, a big ideas and overall expectations from the curriculum. What we really want our kids to walk away with, those core skills, those literacy skills, those numeracy skills, those really important elements that again, we hold, uh, as as high value in in all education. And of course, the global competencies. Those soft skills that employers are telling us more and more, that's what they're looking for. And so when we want our graduates to, um, to walk out of rent the kind of school board, we want them to attain those things. And we really believe that the move to our inspired learning document will help us do that, help us reach that because not only do we consider those four elements, but we we we're always mindful of the wellness of our students, of equity and of inclusion. And that's the, uh, the model on the right hand side. So experiential learning is inspired learning. I want to take us through very quickly here, uh, some of our our calls for proposals. So you might remember from, uh, three years ago, or the first year that we ran call for proposals, we had thirteen proposals come forward, uh, which we were pretty happy about. That was a bit of a celebration because it, uh, you know, it was it was new enough as an idea, uh, at least in terms of being labeled as such. The follow-up year, we had twenty-nine proposals. And this year, despite the fact that this proposal went out, knowing that we were going to hit another lockdown, there were thirty-three proposals that we received. Um, meaning that we could allocate up to forty-eight thousand dollars in funds to support some of this learning. So I don't have time to go through all of the projects, some of which are already finished, some are partway through and some still have some work to do for sure. But you can see just the list of things that we're going there. Stop from supporting the arts, uh, partnering to, um, uh, with the with old age homes and retirement homes and and working with seniors. Partnering with local artists, creating certifications for some of our students. Um, woodworking, auto bodywork, video production, um, partnerships with local farmers, doing budgeting workshops. And so you can see that whole list. Anytime we provide our students with a a potential project-based learning opportunity and we connect that to the to the curriculum documents, we help them build uh, global competencies and core skills, like that's really inspired learning. And when we look at the videos and some of the pictures, you're going to see that excitement. What I want to do is talk about three different proposals. Um, and, uh, I'll I'll kind of go through them fairly quickly. And hopefully, as I do go through our experiential learning proposals that, uh, I want to highlight here, you'll be able to make the connection to our inspired learning document. So let's go through this first one. This first one is a grade five-six class at EDPS. And the project is about the Zibi One Planet Sustainable Living. And, um, this actually, uh, when you read, I won't read the whole thing on there, but when you read that word when you get a chance, you're going to probably, I I said, how could we, how could we say no to this? When I think about the amount of partnerships that are in here, the amount of work the students are going to be doing, the way that they're going to be building character and citizenship and other global competencies, it was really, it would obviously be really hard to say no to a project like this. So one of the things that we want to talk about is this, those four, those four elements. So the teaching appro- approaches. Um, when Mike Fitzmaurice and Gail Mills, the teachers of this class, shared their information with me, they they kind of made this joke to me. They said that they were going through this and then a math investigation broke out. And I like the term broke out because to me that speaks to the fact that, um, as they recognized the excitement in their students, talking about the cost of wells and pumps and systems like that, that it immediately, they were able to pull curriculum and and talk about this. And so a lot of times I say to teachers, don't be afraid of experiential learning. Don't be afraid of of having to get through the curriculum because the curriculum's there and we can tie it a lot more easily than a lot of people think we can. And so, um, when they found that, uh, they had to cover some of the information about cost per gallon, et cetera, um, they 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 let this math investigation break out. And that's fun. That's expe- that's inspiring for kids and they're excited about it. Also point out that, uh, the data that they used for this was generated from a family business. So again, we're we're partnering here very quickly, very innocently, um, with with families, with communities and community businesses. Uh, one of the other elements of an inspired learning lesson is talking about the use of technology. And so here you can see them as a snapshot of a computer screen where you can see the map embedded in there. So again, we talked about those teaching approaches and you can see very quickly here how this teacher has used technology to support visually what area might look like as they design their, uh, sustainable living homes. And again, remember this project is about the development of sustainable living. Learning partnerships. So this project has had lots of partners built right into it. Uh, the bottom left image shows Christina Ruddy and she's, uh, certainly, um, connected to our our First Nations Wakanagon. And really, this project with the Zibi, uh, sustainable living was kind of an afterthought. They actually had Christina in talking to their class just as a check-in on their beating projects, which again, more experiential learning, more partnerships, but Christina was talking to them and one of the kids made some comment about air quality. And so she turned them on to this Zibi project and suggested school reach out to them. The, um, the bottom right picture is Josie Bourgeois. She's another consultant uh, at Pick Wakanagon on the Zibi project. And, uh, this is a picture actually of her interacting with the class a little bit, but she also, um, is a is a traditional powwow dancer. And she, as part of their integrated work with with, uh, their courses, she had, um, or they had, uh, Josie do, lead them through a powwow step groove class for part of their physical education. So, um, we're we're blending curriculum areas. We're we're finding our community partners are excited to be part of lots of learning. The, uh, the top picture is a a guy named Eric and he works with, uh, Grow For You Link. And, um, when they were talking to Eric about their involvement in this Zibi project and how they're going to design homes and they wanted to make sure that there was good air quality there, they were talking about, uh, plants that that they could could have plant and grow to help with that. And so this is another community partner that was providing them with some guidance around the types of plants that give good air quality off. And then the fourth element, learning environments. I mean, you, if you go into the class of of Gail or Mike, you see that their classroom desks are arranged in all kinds of different ways, sometimes pulled out into the hallway. The kids are up out of their desks. They're working. Uh, this is a picture of them building models actually for their sustainable homes out of out of wood. So really great thing. Picture in the middle here. Uh, they were talking about structures as they designed their homes and thinking about junction points and stuff. And so that's, uh, they had a chance to to build these three-dimensional models. The picture on the right shows, uh, air quality. As they were talking about air quality, they decided that, hey, if it if it's good enough for them to think about air quality in their own classroom, what about all their classmates? What about all their schoolmates? What about the other rooms of the school? Should they not also have good quality air? And so this class takes on an even bigger piece here because they've they've, um, coded their micro bits to go into classrooms and check air quality out. So I kind of show these pictures in the middle of our global competencies because I can tell you right now, there's critical thinking in here, there's creativity in here, there's collaboration, communication. And what about the citizenship and character? It's there and and it's there in spades. And it's all because we're empowering kids to be part of something, to do something, to tackle a problem in a very hands-on experiential way. Did you see well-being? Did you see equity? Did you see inclusion in that last example? That would round out our inspired learning document and I would argue you probably, you did, you definitely did. Uh, so let's look at a couple more projects. This first project is a grade seven, eight class at Walters Addo. Here's a a quick video and I think I have time to show it to you. Uh, let's 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 kind of go through it.
Center Public School. We are located in the county of Buckburn, our west of Autumn.
We are addicted to a school with five hundred students.
You know, the fact that the hall, I have to lay in this, 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 this.
It was not always a pandemic, possibly, but there were already, uh, we could actually do this, yeah.
Some of these comments with the fact that produce and healthy food are really expensive to buy. Unhealthy eating habits, yeah, I feel like I tried that.
But that's with it. There is an all-provved, meaningful experience, it's possible, but also it's
Center Public School. We are located in the county of Buckburn, our west of Autumn.
We are addicted to a school with five hundred students.
You know, the fact
Sorry, that was echoing and You're on mute, Peter.
No sound.
Okay, well, I, um, I I heard it was echoing with my camera on, so I tried to mute it and I guess that took away the sound. But I'll just go ahead from there and, uh, feel free to get in and watch that, um, that video as you get your opportunity to. It really is worth watching. And, uh, it's it's quick, but it shows the excitement of the students. They had a chance to, um, create this video because they applied for for grants outside of our school board as well. And, um, it worked for them because they had a chance to collaborate together, uh, use technology and for something that they believed in. Uh, this project was really cool because what they were trying to do was again, come up with ways that they could, uh, you know, grow plants and and think about irrigation. They, uh, used micro bits, they did soil samples, they created models using three D printers and then they built their actual final versions of their, um, of their little growth spots, uh, out of wood with their kitter kits, their steam kits from, uh, from past years. So again, really great, a really great assignment for these students because it it expanded way more than one lesson. It took in math, it took in science, um, and it gave them a chance to, uh, look at making connections outside of our, out outside of our community, actually. Kids were really engaged. As a school, I should point out, the principal, uh, shared this document or shared this, uh, class activity as well with the rest of the staff as a way to sort of demonstrate how inspired learning can be cross-curricular, how it can engage kids and build global competencies. I won't show this video because I don't want to run into the same issue, but I think that the trustees may have received a letter from this class. Uh, so the grade five-six class, uh, remote synchronous learning class participated in or got involved in a collaborative art project. And I'll tell you what, when you watch this video, um, you'll see very clearly, these kids are excited about this. And so this video shows, uh, this young student unboxing her art supplies. And everybody's art supply box gives them a chance to, uh, create something that means something to them. And in the end, they're working with, uh, the Ovi Chaos, it's called, uh, group. They're going to put up these, um, or they're proposing to put up their art walls, their art displays sort of around the county at various pla- at various times, uh, connecting not only their own learning, uh, but connecting their work with with outside, uh, artists as well. And, uh, really, really motivational. Uh, this is sort of show you some of the, some of the elements that are in their art box. And of course, that Inspire and Power Achieve, uh, picture on the right-hand side shows what the art box looks like. But if you get a chance, go in and check out that video. It's about three minutes long. Okay, and the third one I want to talk about very quickly because I know I'm I'm running a little bit out of time, but, um, there's a lot of work this year about developing our outdoor learning spaces. Um, what I really, really appreciate is when teachers, uh, and in this case, the principal, find ways to engage our students, even as young as kindergarten, in changes for their school, in ways that they can be engaged. And, uh, if you click, when you get access to this slide deck, there's a link in this slide deck to another one created at, um, at Central Public School where these kids, uh, are sharing their thoughts, giving their voice about what they want in their learning area. They're having a chance to, um, to self-advocate. And that's really important. That's an important part of what we consider to be experiential in in inspired learning. So, uh, I already talked about Katie Rakowski's class quickly. We didn't stop there in terms of our inspired experiential, uh, learning this year. We we sent out, our TELTSIS worked really hard to provide things to our entire system. People working remotely in remote classes, but also people and our students working at home during school closure periods. So we had a few things that I can highlight here. Uh, one of them was this experiential design challenge where, uh, people working from home could build towers, could build bridges or could build marble tracks. And again, on that slide deck, when you get a chance, if you click through, you can get access to, um, to the jam boards and the, uh, and and the flip grids and see what actually our students working from home are designing, are building, are creating. And you can just imagine all of the global competencies that they're developing as they do that. Some classroom teachers chose to use it as part of their curricular, um, assessments and others didn't. They just let their students work through it. I think we're, um, we're still not finished. This isn't wrapped up yet. I think at last look, we were at thirteen or fourteen. Um, but it's it's growing. This is what I'm really excited about. We are spending some time also aligning, um, our experiential opportunities that we have at secondary into our elementary schools. And so we have this Oh YAP race car challenge for grade seven and eight students. And, um, this is a, this is a collaboration between our TELTSIS and our Oh YAP coordinator. And they're going into some grade seven, eight classes. The kids get to build this Oh YAP fan-powered car and, um, and then have these races with them. After which, our Oh YAP coordinator will talk to the students about some of the different possible Oh YAP pathways that might be open to them. So we really believe in the importance of starting this early, making sure that people understand that there's a pathway for them that, uh, is very viable, doesn't have to be a fallback pathway. Our skilled trades are really important, experiential like nothing else. And, um, and we want to try to make sure that we're, um, we're exposing our grade seven and eight students to these various opportunities at a very early age. Um, this just, you know, is, uh, a a quote that we talk about, uh, the importance of specialized skills majors, the the Oh YAP program. And I just put down on the bottom of that, below that, a link to a competition and career exploration fair happening tomorrow. So I don't know what everybody's time commitment is when you get the slide deck later today. If you're at all interested in seeing one of our grade eleven students in action in a competition or checking out other elements of, uh, what this looks like, that virtual skills Ontario competition and career exploration is a link to registration. It's free and there's some great things happening. Um, and if you have time, you might want to check that out as well. Micro bits, uh, we sent home micro bits to three remote classes. Again, wanted to make sure we engaged our remote learners as well. And I, these micro bits are incredible. Kids build code. They can have their micro bits do various things, like I mentioned earlier, testing air quality, soil quality, et cetera. And, um, and light up and do different things. And we wanted to make sure that our kids, even though they were working remotely, felt engaged. And we shipped all those micro bits to their homes. It was really, really great. And and really finally, I know there may be some questions, so I'll just kind of wrap it up with with this kind of thought. When we engage students in the learning that empowers them to make a difference, then they learn that they can make a difference. And that's really what inspired learning is all about. That's what experiential learning is all about. We want them to participate, we want them to reflect, and we want them to apply, uh, their learning from that to some other aspect of their life. So I know I went quickly through that. Uh, and I'm sorry that there were some issues with sound quality in those videos, but again, you'll have access to that and, uh, and and click but again, you'll have access to that and uh, and, and click through them. If you have any questions at any point about this or any of the projects, or you want to see more or talk more, just send me an email and I'm happy to follow up with you because I get excited thinking about it. So I'll open up the questions if we have time for that.
Yeah, Peter, it's Chair Mike Gannett, yeah, we do have time for some very, a couple of brief questions, but uh, we only have a few minutes, so if anybody has, has a question burning, please ask Peter, thank you.
And again, I'm happy if something comes up down the road, if you think of a question or you want to ask for some clarification, just send me an email just for the sake of time, I'm happy to answer anytime.
Yeah, Susan Humphries has a brief question.
Super.
Uh, thank you Chair Gannett, um, wonderful presentation, Peter, thank you very much. I, I got excited just listening and watching it all, that's for sure. Uh, I guess I'm wondering, so, so what's next? Um, I, I know we uh, we had what, thirty-three proposals this year, forty-eight thousand dollars? Um, is there, is there, and, and I mean, we have a budget meeting later, so perhaps I'll know later on, but is there money set aside for, for the next year? I know this was kind of a three-year project, as I believe, so can you help, help kind of give us a sense of what's next?
Yeah, well, and the beautiful thing about experiential learning is that it doesn't always require money. When we look at some of the um, some of the proposals that happened this year, like that Zibi Sustainable Life Project, really uh, we gave a little bit of money to that, but the amount of, of learning that happened there really didn't require a lot, I think a thousand dollars. To speak to the, the funding part of it though, um, every year, the ministry allot a certain amount of money for experiential learning, or at least they have in these last couple of years. I haven't yet seen what that number looks like for next year, but we try to find ways to make it happen and support it, uh, you know, through our portfolios. The reason that I'm spending so much time uh, this year trying to blend experiential learning and inspired learning is because I really think that the more we get our students and our teachers thinking about ways to build in partnerships, we're going to start to be able to do this and generate it. And it's not going to have to be one-off activities that cost a lot of money. That's the goal, really. So there will be funding there, I don't know what it's going to look like for next year yet, um, but uh, but we're going to, we'll make it happen. Okay, thank you, and thank you for that question. And so if there's no other questions now, again, thanks for the opportunity to present. And if there's ever, uh, at any time, questions that you want to have, follow up, you're curious about something, you want to be a partner in some of the learning, just let me know and I'll try to facilitate that.
Uh, yes, Pino, uh, you have a question for Peter or?
I just wanted to, to make a comment, uh, a huge thanks to System Principal Burnett for your leadership, uh, along with Superintendent Block and, and so many others in the experiential learning and the, the uh, inspired experiential learning. And I love that, not only the nature of the projects that are underway in our district and how engaging they are, but the fact that regardless of the mode of learning, we see this kind of learning through uh, for the benefit of our students, our staff and our school community. So uh, to you Pete, thanks for all of your leadership on behalf of senior staff and the Board of Trustees.
Thank you, Pino, appreciate that.
And uh, Peter, thanks again, I always feel inspired after your, your uh, your sessions, I just really appreciate it. Uh, Susan and Peter took the wind out of my sails, what I was going to say, but well said, guys, thank you.
Okay, thanks everybody, I really appreciate the opportunity.
Um, just moving right along, being aware of time, we've got a um, a second item, and it's from Superintendent Jacqueline Corrie. Uh, title is a year-end graduation ceremonies, so Jacqueline, the floor is yours.
Thanks very much, Mike. Um, this is just a brief verbal update, we thought that it would be important uh, to this group to give you an update in terms of our thoughts around graduation this year, both secondary and, and briefly about elementary. Um, together with the cast groups of the secondary principal group, we have had some ongoing conversations to think about how we would honor students who are graduating this, this school year. And we really have landed on the fact that our process will be um, basically the same as what we did last year. Given that we're right now in a stay-at-home order and we're not really sure uh, what things would look like in June, we do know that what we did last year, uh, we do feel that we did hear from families and, and students that they did feel that it was an opportunity to celebrate. And of course, it's not the way that we normally would have in the past, but we did have um, aspects built in to make sure that it was a special occasion for everybody. So just to review some of the things that we did last year and to inform you of what our thoughts are for this year, I'll just highlight them quickly. All students uh, will receive a grad package, it may be a grad box or a big envelope, um, in which they would come to the school, um, do, do a pickup, similar to what we did with um, deployment of devices. And in that box or that envelope, they will um, receive their gown, their cap, they will receive a gown to use in a photo op, they will have um, a lawn sign that they would be for each of the secondary high schools, they're different, so they're um, they're specific to the school they belong to. They'll have their SHSM cords, a grad booklet, anything that's that kind of um, you know, take-away keepsake in re- in relation to graduation. Then, once they pick up that package, then they will move uh, to a location outside of the school that will be decorated for a photo opportunity. And that is very similar to what we did last year as well. So all, all schools are ordering gowns um, from a company, they're going to come in, they're all individually uh, wrapped and labeled with um, each student's or each graduate's um, name on them so that we don't have to have lots of contact with them. And then after the photo, they, they put them into a bucket and we will be returning those, of course. So we have um, maintained that practice this year, just in, in terms of enhancing uh, some public confidence, but also to ensure that we're following COVID protocols. In terms of the logistics around the photo opportunity, last year, it was a significant amount of time that was required. We do know that we had um, spaced out the appointments with a pretty significant amount of time last year because COVID was brand-new and we were ensuring that we were not having any overlap. As we get closer to the end of June, um, we will review our protocol with the health unit. They approved what we did last year, so we'll review it again and see if um, you know, there are some potential changes that we might, we might be able to make. But we would still follow a very similar process where it's one student and their family arrives, picks up their package, moves to the photo location, gets their photo, and then heads off um, after that. The other, the other thing um, just to mention is that there will be a grad video, and that is similar to what we did last year as well. And I do believe that Jonathan's already reached out to some of you to discuss um, the recording of the greetings from the board by trustees for those uh, ceremonies. And each school will be doing a pre-recorded video, but it will be aired um, the afternoon or evening of June thirtieth, similar to what we would have done if it was a live ceremony. And they're just working out the details of that. Of course, this year, there's a little more time in some ways for front loading, but there's also a significant amount of the video that needs to be, that we need to wait on because we're waiting to hear about awards, for example, which are usually typically um, connected to some, some marks. So that's the piece that we see our schools doing and, and I've know both activities are a significant undertaking to do the video and the distribution. But I, but I do know that the schools are excited also in thinking of, you know, how can they make sure that this is an opportunity for families and students to celebrate this accomplishment? And it's important to all of them. In fact, we've had a number of conversations about what graduation looks like, and that in the, in and of itself um, really speaks to the fact that the schools value it and recognize how others feel about it and want to make sure that it is a special event uh, for their students. So that's the plan that we have currently. Also, just to know, you'll know last year, um, we did have a local celebrity who was in the video for the secondary uh, school of students who were graduating, it was Jason Blaine. And this year, we're working on another local celebrity, so stay tuned. Uh, we're pretty close to being able to make the announcement about uh, who that might be. But again, that was the um, the guidance counselors from each of the high schools collaborating and saying, what can we do to try and um, you know, just add another element to the video that helps to make it special? So when I'm uh, able to share, I will be sure to share with you all about that. Um, the specifics around the elementary grad, it will again be similar to what happened last year too. There's a little bit of a different flair from elementary school to elementary school as the normally is, but in, in uh, in general terms, they will do the same things they did last year and allow for those photos and videos um, again as well. So just a brief little update, and if there's any questions, of course, feel free. It looks like Nick has his hand up.
Go ahead, Nick.
Yeah, I just have a quick question, I just want to thank all the admin staff for making these plans go forward, and I think it's a really great opportunity. But in the spirit of like optimism and hoping that COVID will get better over the summer with vacci- vaccinations rolling out and stuff like that, I really think that we should consider doing, I said this last year and I'm going to say it again, I'm just, I just think we should consider doing like a fall gathering around Thanksgiving for those graduating students, especially at the secondary level, because in all honesty, I don't believe YouTube is a way to graduate from high school, nor university. Um, I don't know if like Jaslyn or Hudson want to add some opinions on that, but I know that students don't want to graduate that way, and like, yes, that's our only option right now, but if we can plan something in the spirit of optimism going forward around Thanksgiving weekend to have that plan in place as well, because by the looks of it, it's, we're supposed to all be vaccinated by then, but who really knows?
Uh, Jasmine had her hand up, Jasmine, go right ahead, thank you.
Yeah, for sure, and I, I can agree with Nick on this. I know a lot of people, especially last year, were really optimistic that, you know, this year would be their graduating year and then they could actually have some sort of graduation. And obviously, right now, where we're at, there's no way we can have an in-person graduation by June. Um, but it would be nice to have at least some sort of, a bit of a plan in place just so that obviously if the, the time came and we could do that, we could expand it. But I would agree with Nick that a little bit of optimism would be nice just because I think a lot of students really would be missing out. And not a lot of people look forward to a YouTube graduation because it's so different. It's not exactly like the same experience at all. I mean, I know I, I attended my brother's graduation and it wasn't much of a graduation, it was nice, it was a nice ceremony, but it wasn't the same experience at all.
Uh, Nick, did you have a follow-up?
Yeah, just a complete follow-up, just like another option to think about, and I'm sure you've explored these, but if we could just go back and explore them again, like if churches can have drive-in masses and stuff like that, why can't we have smaller drive-in graduations? For example, at ADHS Track or just that there's so much space between ADHS and Walter Zato, for example, if you did a couple letters of the last name at each time to do a gra- a drive, drive-in grad or something like that, there's just, I just feel like YouTube is not the way to go for especially a high school graduation.
Thanks for your comments, Nick, I know that we're getting uh, late on time, we've gone a little overtime. Um, I think that we could probably bring some of these uh, ideas forward to senior admin and Pino in the near, in the, in the future. Um, I, I, as, as at your age, I would be expressing similar issues of concern and want. Um, I think that uh, moving forward, I'm, I'm assuming that the uh, maybe the public health unit as usual might be consulted, but I think we need to be creative and at least make an effort to look at it. So uh, thank you. As, as Chair, um, is there any new business that anybody needs to bring up at this time? Doesn't look like there is. Um, I just uh, I, I just move that uh, the board just uh, accept these two presentations and uh, I, I think that uh, we need to move on to the next committee. Um, I'd like to place a motion to adjourn. Uh, if that's possible, as we, as, as we have real time restraints. Is there a second or that? Nick, thank you very much. Okay, this meeting's adjourned, thank you. Floor is yours, Chair Morris.
Okay, we'll be uh, whoops, I muted, no. We'll move on to our next uh, committee, equity and inclusion, and I'll turn it over to Chair Adam.
Thank you Chair Morris, and I would like to call to order this meeting of the Equity and Inclusion Committee on eleventh of May, twenty twenty-one. Uh, you've all seen the agenda, are there any agenda amendments? I can't see all the hands, so you could speak up. Okay, thank you very much, uh, I'd like a motion to approve the agenda, please. Again, I can't see you, so all right, I think Dave Shields is approving, a second please. Brian, okay, all in favor, or are there any objections? All right, we'll continue. Oh, is there any conflict of interest there? Anybody declaring a conflict of interest? Speak up, please, no, thank you very much, all right, we shall continue. We have only one item on the agenda, and that is a report on the Student Support Fund and what they've been up to. And I would ask John Lederich to take the floor, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, uh, welcome everyone. Um, we're here today to uh, bring an update on the activities, initiatives, and overall progress of the Student Support Fund despite uh, everything that's been going on. This is a, an annual opportunity that we come to you uh, to bring uh, information and a sense of the work, and then certainly some of the uh, items that we're, we're looking to move forward on, some of the initiatives. Uh, we have Mary McCaw with us, I see she just joined us, she had some technical difficulties, I'm glad she's with us. Uh, Mary will speak to uh, in large part the report. Uh, she is the, uh, the staff lead on this and really plays an integral role in, in ensuring that the SSF uh, is doing the important work uh, for, for supporting the students that often are um, hidden in plain, but with that, maybe I'll turn it over to Mary, thank you.
Hi, everyone, um, I think everybody here knows what the Student Support Fund does, but I'll just give a brief description. Um, it is, it was established to provide financial support to enhance school life for students in need by providing mini-grants. Um, and the grants cover things ranging from participation fees and extracurricular activities to clothing, to application fees for colleges, and all other things in between. Um, from the report, this year obviously was a, was a unique year and it limited our ability to um, have events, but we were very fortunate to have our Employee Payroll Contribution Program, to have funds coming in through that on a monthly basis. And additionally, we received some generous donations from some community organizations, uh, the Canadian Education Exchange Foundation and uh, St. Paul's Anglican Church, as well as just community members, at Christmas time, we often get um, donations from family members and some of our staff making donations on behalf of their department or their school staff. So through that, we've been, we made over, from the donations, we've got over twelve thousand dollars. And then the ongoing Employee Payroll Contribution is usually around nine fifty, but it does fluctuate monthly. Um, because sometimes there's a retirement, sometimes casual staff are enrolled in the program, so those things will impact how much we get on a month-to-month basis. Um, overall, we've had a little over thirty applications to the fund this month, or this year, which is significantly lower than we normally see. Um, and that is largely in part to, we don't have the participation fees for extracurricular programs or field trips, which um, now probably are about fifty percent of what we normally give out um, through grants. Um, we've given out over six thousand dollars and most of it has been for basic needs such as clothing and uh, supporting families that we know are food insecure over longer breaks from school. and supporting families that we know are food insecure over longer breaks from school, like Christmas or March break, sending them home with something so that we know that they have food, that these are students that typically rely on the student nutrition program in our schools. Additionally, through sort of a partnership with our IT department, we have refurbished Chromebooks that we've been able to provide to students to help support them in their online learning. And we've given out 10 of those this year. And that's kind of where we're at with the grants for this year. Some things that we've been working on kind of behind the scenes as we aren't working on events is just ways we can get more relevant data that we can use. So we've updated the form and next year, every form that we receive will track the student's grade. And we've also put in an, an opportunity for staff or families if they want to say how the fund has impacted the student, a little section where they can put a testimonial and we can use that for potential promotional materials. On the form, it does say that they will be identified as like secondary teacher or elementary principal and not use the name. So we are able to still maintain the anonymity of the applicants. And for tracking grades, that helps us to see where the needs are in certain communities. Like is our elementary school in higher need? In the Barry's Bay family of schools? And are high school students in higher need in our Pembroke family of schools? Or whatever it might be? And that helps us whenever we do have an opportunity to meet with community organizations or businesses that are looking to support us in some way. We can say, you know, this is where we have a big need and these are the communities that are affected by that. And be able to provide that data to them. So I think it's just a good piece of information to track. Additionally, we, we've looked at doing this in the past as having a newsletter. And this year it gave us an opportunity with things a little bit slower. We still want to be able to reach out to our donors and just people in the community in general and let them know that the Student Support Fund is still supporting students and how it's doing that. And so we did a fall and a spring newsletter and it gives us a chance to acknowledge how the fund is supporting students, the feedback that we're getting from like the principals and teachers that are putting these applications out and acknowledge and showcase our donors, our sponsors, and our events that we do on a yearly basis. And something that's in the works right now, nothing is set in stone, but we're working with Rotary Renfrew right now on a partnership. They approached us through Susan about food security, food insecurity in our Renfrew family of schools. And they would like to set up a pilot project there based on a program out of B.C. called Backpack Buddies. And using the Student Nutrition Program Coordinator, we will identify students that have food insecurity in that community and be able to send a backpack home with them on a weekly basis that has not for sure these items, but things like a bag of apples, some cans of soup, some cereal, oatmeal, those kinds of things to get those students through the weekend and so they can come back to school ready to learn and not, you know, struggling because of the lack of food at home. So those are kind of the highlights from the report. If you guys have any questions?
So if you've got a question, please raise your hand. I found out where I can find that in the chat column. So thank you. Anybody's questions? Susan?
Thank, thank you, Chair Adam. Thanks for that update, Mary. Really appreciate getting caught up on, on what's happening there. I just had a couple of questions. I, I noticed that the Employee Payroll Contribution, only 4% of staff have signed up for that. Do you know if that's sort of the normal percent that these kinds of programs run at? You know, based, I guess I'm just thinking about other, other boards and they do similar things. I'm just wondering if we're kind of in the ballpark or whether somehow we need to promote that more. And I have another question after, so I'll let you finish that one first.
Okay. The only other board that I've talked to that has a similar program is Hastings Prince Edward. And based on their numbers, we aren't really off the mark. It's pretty, pretty similar. One thing that is new and has brought new people in to the program is the letter that's in the new hire package through HR. I actually want to update that letter because it's a pretty plain letter. And I think whenever you're getting all the documents that you get when you start a new job, it might not stand out. So I think if I can find a bit of time in the next couple of months to get one ready for September, that's a little bit more maybe flashy, might draw people's attention a little bit more. But yeah, we had, I think about 15 people join the program this year, which is the biggest jump we've had since the initial people signed up. And many of our initial people that enrolled, there's been several that have retired, like a lot of them were principals and stuff like that. And I know there's been some turnover in the principals retiring in the last few years. So it'll be good to build the base up again.
Okay, well, that's, that's good to know. We're kind of in the ballpark anyway. And you're right, probably a splashier letter might be, might be a thought. I'm glad to hear that Rotary Renfrew did connect up with you. I know they were very, they're very keen on doing something to support food security in Renfrew. So, and I know they're working with TAP as well. So that's, that's really good. The Fall/Spring Newsletter, I'm just wondering, I, I don't recall it coming on my, on my email and it definitely might have, Mary. I'm just wondering if you can just make sure that we get it as well because we could perhaps help promote in our community to other, other opportunities for donations. So just make sure we're on the list and, and I apologize, maybe we are. So anyway, thank you. Thank you for all the great work you do on that.
Thanks.
There any further questions? I'm not seeing any, so we are having quite, oh, I beg your pardon, Director Perfoni.
Thank you, Susan. Just a, a quick note to thank both John and Mary for their efforts through the Student Support Fund. And to add, in the spirit of the conversation we've had, as much as the pandemic has brought on challenges, it also provides an opportunity for renewal for us. And to Mary's point around that rejuvenation of our connection with our staff for the importance of the fund, I think the notion that the pandemic has exasperated inequities across society, including the education sector, is at the front of people's minds. And so I think there's an opportunity to capitalize in the kind of work, including the refresh of that letter that, that Mary's speaking to. So thanks for all your leadership, Mary.
Thank you, Director. Any further comments or questions, please? All right, what a force to me then, Mary and John, to thank you again for all the work you do in this. The issue of equity, poverty is not always the first thing that springs to people's minds, but we know how children in schools will suffer from not wanting to be different and being very hungry and unable to learn. And so we thank you for helping these children to be able to be part of the whole. And that's a great work you do. Thank you very much. And we look forward to newsletters.
Right, thank you.
All right, so is there any new business that anyone would like to discuss in this field? Not seeing anyone. I'm open to a motion for adjournment. Thank you, Susan. Susan will move adjournment as the second. Thanks, Mike. And are there any people objecting to being adjourned? Thank you very much. That ends the meeting of the Equity and Inclusion Committee for this day. All yours, Mr. Chair.
Okay, I think we're almost right on time, which is rather amazing considering all these great reports, opportunity for a lot of discussion. We set up when we looked at three committees, we set up a time for a break between 2:00 and 2:15. It's now 2:05. We say we take a 10-minute break and we'll reconvene at 2:15 for Finance and Resources Committee. Okay, so see you in 10.
You're on mute, Brian.
Thank you. 2:15, and I think we're all here. And I'll turn it over to Chair Boland, and this is the Finance and Resources Committee today. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Morris. So this is the meeting of the Finance and Resources Committee for May 11th, 2021. So we call it to order. Everyone has received the agenda. There's going to be one amendment. The, in the closed section of the meeting, there will be a presentation from Jennifer Burns on the Bus Consortium. from Jennifer Burns on the Bus Consortium. So that being said, is there any other amendments to the agenda? Anybody has? Seeing none, so I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Thanks, Brian. Secondor? Thanks, Marjorie. All in favor? All right, and that's passed. Thank you, everybody. The next thing is that are there any conflicts of interest with the new amended agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on. So the first item on the agenda today is the year-to-date financial status for 2020, 2021. And I'll hand it over to Jennifer Burns. We had a little chat yesterday, and I guess, starting last week, they just got inundated with all kinds of reports from the, from the ministry, from GSNs to three or four others, right, Jennifer? So the, the whole team has been, I guess, around the clock, right, even the weekends, just busy trying to get this stuff done. So hats off to you and your team. Jennifer?
Thanks, Leo. Nice to see everybody, although it is virtually again. Yep, before we get into the budget item, which is item number two, and that's all of the information that we were provided last week by the ministry, we thought we would come to you with an update for this, this current year. So a financial check-in, as you will, a year-to-date, in keeping with the cyclical reviews, maximizing day-to-day savings and ensuring effectiveness. So this would be the budget we prepared at this time last year. Found ourselves starting the school year in September. We did our revised estimates in December, and now Tammy's here just to let you know how, how our actuals to planning are faring out with a little bit of a school year and then the rest of the actual fiscal year to finish. With that, I will hand it over to Tammy, who will walk us through the report that was shared in the package.
Okay, and I'm sharing my screen, so it'll help you see what I'm talking about. But first, I'll start off with the report. So this is to the end of April, and where we should be between sixty-seven percent and eighty percent, depending on the cycle, whether it's a ten-month school year cycle, like salaries for teachers, or twelve months. So at the end of April 2021, our total expenses are showing sixty-five point six percent of the forecast being spent, which is down one point nine percent compared to April of last year, showing, indicating that we're experiencing savings, which I'll talk more about once we get to the expense page. Why I say indicating. The budget forecast was updated to include some more one-time grants that we heard about after I presented the year-to-date to the end of December, that, in PPS, that were announced. So those were more money for optimizing air quality of two-hundred-and-ninety-four-thousand-nine-hundred, which is the same amount that we got in the fall. So they doubled that money. Additional techno- tech, tech devices for three-hundred-and-thirty-seven-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty-seven, money to support health and safety and enhance cleaning of two-hundred-and-eighty-thousand-four-sixty-six, and more money for transportation enhanced cleaning COVID, COVID costs, et cetera, of forty-two thousand, for a total of increased funding of nine-hundred-and-forty-four-thousand-eight-forty-six. However, because we'd had some of those health and safety enhanced cleaning costs already in the budget, and some we realized we didn't have in the budget and needed to add, but there was a hundred thousand that we could apply to prior expenses, so thereby reducing our deficit by a hundred thousand from, from the last time I shared this with you. So when you look on the screen, what I've shared, the first page is the summary page. So I've highlighted it, and hopefully you can see my highlight, that the deficit is now showing two million and thirty-two-thousand, down from twenty-two million one-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand. So a small decrease, but it's a decrease on the same. So when we look at where these changes are, are in, in the next few pages. So the only change on the revenues page is in the other line, the PPS line, has gone up by the nine-hundred-and-forty-four-thousand-eight-forty-six. So other than that, the revenue page hasn't stayed, has stayed the same since the last time we taught. And the COVID budget summary has been updated to reflect the additional costs that have been added. So which would be on line five for the tech devices. So that's now forty-seven. Line six for the enhanced cleaning has been updated. The one-hundred-and-eighty-thousand, transportation has been updated, and the ventilation in classrooms for the air quality testing has been up, up by the two-hundred-and-eighty-four-thousand-nine-hundred. So on this page at the bottom, the difference covered by the board amount has now changed from two-hundred-and-eighty-eight-thousand-seven-zero-six to one-eighty-eight-seven-zero-six, assuming all of these things still happen. When we get to the expense side of things, so I'm going to focus on the first part, the budget assessment, before I talk about the risk assessment, where we're at. Line four for classroom computers has been updated, again, for that funding, and student transportation and school operations. Those lines are where those expenses have been added to the forecast. So when we look over at our, what we've spent to date compared to the prior years, there's some lines that look a little funny. And part of that is because last year wasn't a normal year. So we had, at this point in time, some of those lines were fully spent. That actual is being compared to the final for the year, not the, what we've originally budgeted for the year. So when we look at the sick leave and special leave line, last year at the end of April, that budget was pretty much spent because of our lockdown. So it's showing ninety-nine percent spent compared to, right now, we're showing seventy-one percent. When I compare that to the prior April, we're right on track of, at seventy percent. We were seventy percent at this point last year. So and that's the line where we added the five-hundred-thousand dollars to the budget. So we're, we're on par for, to be good with that budget. Now with the current lockdown, we could have some savings again, like we did last year. So we could see some savings on that line. And then the same would be for some of these others, like that classroom computers, we got that funding, and the order's been put in. However, not all of them have been in, have been received yet. So they're not showing up in the expenses to date yet, but they're in our commitments, which don't show on here. So it, it, they will be, will be spent, but it's just more timing on things. Another thing to note in this section, that's where most of our PPS and all our envelope funding is. So if we don't spend those monies, they'll either get sent back to the ministry if it's a PPF, or it can get, sometimes get deferred if they allow us. But our enveloped grants that don't get spent will definitely get deferred to next year. So those budgets will get, the grants will get reduced, and their expenses will be reduced by the same amount. So that's not reflected in here yet. So that could be why we're seeing some of those savings as well. I've checked over the salary lines, and we've looked like we're on track to be, meet our salary budgets. And then student transportation, we're showing some savings there, which we do have some because of the different shutdowns. But on the revenue side, we don't know yet how much they're going to clawback. So they will claw, last year, they did a flat amount percent. This year, because we do have some routes running, it won't be a flat amount. So they're still working out that formula and gathering information on what that number will be. So that's, we won't see that, the exact savings that we're showing right now, but there, there will be some. And those were the main items, but I wanted to caution you on that, again, it looks like we're going to have savings, but we may not because of those things. And the enrollment and staffing pages weren't included this time because they haven't been updated for the finals since the last time. Enrollment is still being finalized for the March reports, so there was no reason to put them in yet, because they weren't accurate yet. And I think that's it.
Thank you, Tammy. Does anybody have any questions for Tammy or Jennifer? Yes, Mike?
Yes, just briefly, I know that some time ago, we used a little bit of our reserve funds. We were pretty cautious. We didn't use a lot, but we used some. Looking forward, is, is there a possibility, or what do you see as a probability of maybe putting some of those funds back down the road? I know that we don't have all our facts and figures in it yet, but I'm just wondering, Jennifer and Tammy, just want to keep that in the forefront.
Great question, Mike. And actually, I see Tammy's already queued up the page. You may recall, the trustees did, I think it was three-hundred-and-nine, I can't remember the, the dollars amounts, but at three-hundred-and-nine-thousand-ish dollars that the trustees graciously set aside for this purpose. And when Tammy was here last, that looked like two-hundred-and-eighty-eight-thousand dollars. And as she explained through the report, that because we were able to take some of that health and safety funding, some of, that was where we were allowed to apply to past expenses, if not required, was that hundred thousand dollars. So at this point, as Tammy said, it's just a point in time, and not, not everything is, you know, it's just an indicator. It's looking like that hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand that Tammy's got on the screen now.
Thank you.
And, and just with that, the screen's still up there. So I was surprised when we talked yesterday, Jennifer, that, you know, so far, our cost for COVID is roughly six and a half million dollars. So that's line number sixteen. So that's a lot of money that we're putting, you know, in, into that. And then at line twenty-three, so remember last year that we had a surplus because of COVID, that it was one-point-eight million. So that was brought forward and is added to this. So that also helped us to reduce our, our surplus or deficit to just a hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand. So again, a job well done by, by everybody to be able to bring it down that low. Anything else on, on this one? Seeing none. I only see just a little portion of people now that we're sharing the screen. So, well, there we go. So nothing. And then, so Jennifer's up again with the budget. Jennifer?
Thanks, Leo. So yes, as Leo mentioned, the ministry outdid themselves last week on Tuesday, May fourth. They released all the B and SB memos, the GSN, PPF, and capital funding, the technical paper, the special education guidelines, and the EFS forms. EFS is the education funding, financial information system. And so that was a huge release. And, and I think it was always on a wish list, but holy cow, when you get everything at once, it's a, it's a, you know, it does still take you a little while to get through it all. So many meetings actually followed because it was Tuesday. We were afforded the opportunity to meet regionally, provincially, a couple of times, lots of opportunity to discuss, you know, sort of changes, confirmations. We had some, two Q and As with the ministry on Friday, which was very helpful. Actually, one of the things I found helpful was, many of the questions were similar, but they were, the answers, of course, were consistent, but worded slightly differently. And hearing the answers more than once really kind of clarified some thinking, which I was grateful for. So we are on track for, you may recall this slide when we were here a couple of weeks ago. You can see that in May, our plan was to do the GSM projections, estimate our other revenues, update the department budgets, refine salary and benefit budgets. And so we will be, it's, goodness, almost mid-May already. That's wild. So we're digging in and analyzing the pieces of the puzzle individually, but more importantly, how all of that fits together. And so by the end of the month, we'll have a much more fulsome sort of explanation of that blue portion of the slide. At this point, Tammy, we got that sent out to you this morning, so a little bit of advanced notice. I apologize for that, but it has been a lot of work pulling everything together. So Tammy will share with you now our findings to date.
Okay. So as Jennifer said, we've got lots of information. So these are the memos, that, some of the memos that we received last week. There was a couple others that are more technical in nature on how to do things. There's a link there to the education funding site, and I'm sure you've received all these memos as well. So, but if you have, there's a quick link for you to use to them. And we'll dig in, first with the, the GSM. So they called them COVID supports in the GSM. So they added for student technical devices for seven-hundred-and-eleven, seven dollars and eleven cents per pupil in the Pupil Foundation Grant. For us, that's about sixty-two thousand dollars that works out to, from the analysis I've done so far. The mental health supports is a per board amount of a hundred-and-thousand-eight-hundred-fifty-eight, plus a per pupil amount of a dollar thirty-four. So that is a hundred-and-twelve thousand for us. Now, that was added to, to us in the fall. So it was in, included in our revised estimates, but not our original budget. So they've just kind of included that one again. And then the last one is a recent immigrant supplement. So because, this is for ESL, so because they're expecting that the immigrants are down, and that's how our funding is based on our, for our ESL funding, they're giving us a base amount based on our financial statements last year. So because I have, don't know what our decline is, I don't know, this could just make us even to last year. So I'll know more of that when I get to deeper into the, to the grant. Online learning, so they've changed, there was an adjustment last year. So I'm going to second bullet first, that they just kind of did a historical update because they weren't sure how they were going to do the formula yet. So they, they put that into the, the cost adjustment and teacher, the Q and E grant, we call it, in that section last year. So that was fifty-seven thousand last year. This year, they've moved it into the Pupil Foundation Grant as a more permanent thing. And it's to recognize the average class size of thirty for online courses. And for twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two, the adjustment assumes that approximately eight percent of students will take one online course. Though, this will increase over the next couple of years. So each year, it'll build, our funding will go down in the Pupil Foundation compared to prior years, because for secondary classes are funded at twenty-three. So this is taking some of that down. So my initial analysis is showing that it's, we're not going to lose much more this year, if maybe not even quite as much as last year. So it's not a big hit this year, but it will be more going forward. So as in other years, to the school operations allocation has been increased by two percent to the non-staff portion to, to assist with managing increasing commodity prices. Transfers to the GSM from PPS, and I'm sorry, I have the last one highlighted because it shouldn't have been on there. That was one from last year, when I was going through these. So, but they have added Shazam or Specialist High Skills Major. So there was always money in, in the GSM, but there was also money in PPS that we showed in our other revenue. So that amount this year, the increase was, sorry, just my note, two, about two-hundred-and-ninety-six-thousand that was in the PPS this year, that's going into the GSM. And then the After-School Skills Development Programs, again, was funded outside in the PPS. So it was about seventy, sixty to seventy thousand last year, and they're moving about seventy thousand into the GSM, and they're enveloping that. So if we don't spend it all on that program, then it gets deferred into the future years. So it's, it's specifically for that program. And I should mention, too, the Shazam funding is all enveloped as well, whether it's not spent in one year, deferred to the next. So the other couple surprises was the enhanced accountability measures. So the Indigenous Language Allocation and Native Studies Grant is what we refer to, is, which is the courses that they, they teach at the secondary schools, will now be on, on will now be enveloped. So anything that we don't spend on those specific allocations will be moved into the Board Action Plan, which is enveloped. If it doesn't get spent, then it has to be deferred to future years. So that is new for us. And then the library staffing, it's not being enveloped yet, but they've introduced some enhanced reporting to get greater insight in how the funding is being used. And that if boards aren't fully utilizing that funding on library, then we'll need to submit a multi-year plan highlighting our vision and our next steps. So we, again, we don't know exactly how all of these new measures are are going to work, we don't have all the details, and we were hoping to get some more details on the Indigenous enveloping last week, and so far, we haven't gotten them, and other boards are in the same boat that are waiting for some more details to understand this a little bit better. So then labor funding, 1% increase in the salary benchmarks for the for the labor, central labor agreement. And then the increase in the benefits funding to reflect the increases for the benefits plan, maintenance, or improvements and inflationary increases, so that's our trust, our trust Employee Life Health Trust. And then other changes, they've added, they've increased the educational software licensing amount they gave us last year. The minimum board amount went up from 30,000 to 50,000, and we fit in that category, so we're now getting 50 instead of 30. There is an increase to the Trustees Association fee, which is used for the central employer bargaining agent fee. So previously, we were funded at 43,316, now we're funded at 57,394. That money's just more of an in and an out, that money comes to us and we send it off to the trustee association to pay for those fees. So then our PPF memos. This, your slide looks slightly different because I forgot to update this slide. The provincial funding is, that they will provide, not including COVID stuff, just our normal PPF is 288 million, board provincial-wide, previous year's memo was 300 million. And they're saying that they've allocated 122 million of that funding so far. So for us, they've allocated 45,000 for Learning and Innovation Fund for Teachers, Educator Autism AQ subsidy of 7, Math Strategy of 288, that's the money we've been getting for a number of years, Parents Reaching Out Grants of 15,200, and Wellbeing and Mental Health Bundle of 20,600. And that one again is one that we've gotten for multiple years, the bottom, the last three, we've gotten for multiple years, and all around that same amount. The total funds allocated are 375,800 for our board. And then we get into the B7 Planning for 2021 School Year Memo. And I'm in these slides and just focusing on the funding portion of these, of that memo. There was lots of information in that memo, but our focus is on the budget part of it. So they're allocating some funds for COVID, and boards are expected to budget for approximately half of these resources to support the first half of the school year, including access of up to 1% of your reserves, of the board's reserves. And that is because they're going to give us more information in the fall, see how things are going, and let us know whether we can use the other half of the funds or not. So when we look at that memo, there was a, a table showing the different amounts and the different types. So these, we've got additional staffing support of 1.7 million, and for the, as if for the full year. Additional school operations support of 172,000, transportation again for enhanced cleaning and any other COVID-related increases of 560. Special education supports of 146,000, mental health supports of 267,000, and then an amount for re-engaging students and reading assessment support. And this one, they're saying we can use the full amount, so that's 101,000, for a total of $3 million in additional funding, of which we can budget 1.5 million of that at this point in time. And then again, they're saying that we are allowed to use our reserves, which is our accumulated surplus of up to 2.6 million, or 2% which is 2% of our operating grants for the full year, or 1.3 million for the first half of the year. And then when we look at our accumulated surplus, just a reminder, we talked about this in January when I did the year-to-date. So I've updated it to, for the, what we just talked about in, in the current year-to-date. So the operating surplus, when you look at the final column at, in this first section, total operating surplus, 2.16, so when they say we can use 2.6 million, they're talking that these lines, items 2 to 7 are, are available to be used to balance the budget. Even though we've set them aside for specific things, they're still counting that money as money that could be used. So that's where they're coming up with their 2.6. We have 2.1 in our operating surplus that could be used if needed. This is just to show the full picture that the ministry shows, so we broke it out into two slides to make it a little bit bigger to see, and that's the end.
Yeah, I guess one of the things that came out of the, the memos, the meetings, the guidelines and the direction is from the ministry, as we plan for the 2021, 2022 school year and look to that September to January period, we are to plan and to budget for much like this year, where we strive to be face-to-face, but every now and then classes are, are having to work remotely because of contact tracing, or much like the situation we're in right now, when we're under a closure period, we are all working remotely as best we can unless essential, or to support those students with special needs face-to-face. So for budgeting and planning purposes, we are looking for September to January to look like this. In the fall, the ministry is committed to, depending on vaccination status, depending on public health, and actual look, current data at the time, will advise to what February to June would look like. If it's expected that it would continue as we are right now, the additional funding will be provided, the additional access to accumulated surplus will be provided. And hopefully though, optimistically, Jasmine, I love that word, and Nick too, optimistically, we will be back, you know, in our buildings as we were previous to the pandemic. And if that's the case, the ministry is saying the, the funding is not available and the access to the accumulated surplus is not available. So, so we're leaning on how we've experienced this year, we're hopeful that we can return to pre-pandemic times, and, and they're being very conservative to say, hey, if the support is required, it will be there, but if it's not, it won't be. So that's the premise of the approach to budgeting that we are taking this year, much like we did last year. And as Andrew Davis indicated from the ministry, that revised estimates will look completely different for the next fiscal year as they did this year, because we're estimating maybe for something different than what will transpire. But this is under guidance and direction from the ministry, that this is the approach they would like us to take, so. Explanation of that, and we'd be more than happy to entertain any questions you might have.
Thanks, Jennifer, appreciate it, and Tammy. Mike, I saw you had your hand up, was that from before, okay, before, Marjorie?
Thank you, Chair Leo. First, may I make a joke about the page which is currently on my screen, and that says in big black letters, "The End." That seems unusually optimistic when we all know how much work you have to do on this. Thank you for the work in advance. I have two questions, please. The one relates to the educational software licensing, that we did send a letter or some such thing to protest that when they withdrew that funding, does this now cover our needs?
I wouldn't be able to answer that definitively because some of the licenses that were offered were not used, and some are expiring over time, so we could certainly, I could take that question back and, and check in with Doug to find out how that improves our situation.
You're still on mute, Marjorie.
Sorry, I must have touched that by accident. So I had a second question, did you hear my thanks, Jen, on the first question, right, and put it to the end. The, my other question relates to the PPFs, and specifically the Parents Reaching Out Grants, that was withdrawn, was it not? And now they're putting it back after protest, or what's up?
No, I think they just changed the way that the funding came to us. I think it used to be that parents, I see Jonathan nodding, parents, school councils had to apply for it, and now we get a board amount, and the board decides. It's divvied up amongst schools or however.
Okay. I think I did remember that change, and I think local school board, school council just decided it wasn't worth the bother and gave up on it. So will that still be the same, that it will go to the board rather than to specific schools?
Jonathan might have an answer to that, yeah?
Yeah, thanks, Tammy. Yeah, so, so that's indeed correct. Rather than applying for the funding to the ministry, ministry just gave out the money to the board, so it's sitting in account. About 7,400, I believe, there are boats, which, when you think of all the schools that we have, if we were to sort of spread it across, it's, it's not really a fulsome amount to really do much. So in terms of what we're going to do with it, PICC centrally has decided to proceed with a project for all the district and all the, the school councils, parent councils. We did solicit the respective school council chairs for their input on, on projects to pursue. And so in short order, I believe, next week, we have a, the program project that we're hosting, an evening with Dr. Jean Clinton. So it's open to all parents, and that's how the money will be, will be spent. And it's like Tammy mentioned earlier, if we were not to use it, we hand that money back to the province. And in this case, depending on, on the amount for Dr. Clinton, if there is funds left over, we would turn that over. And there is a report as part of that, that we have to fill out in terms of testifying to the activity and the value of that, that project.
Supplementary, please? Okay, thank you. John, does that, the amount here then, is it more or less than we received previously when the money went directly to school councils?
This is where I'm, I'm going to maybe lean on our finance folk, I believe it's a little bit less, but I could be wrong. It seems as though a number of years ago, when they, when this government came into power, there was some shifting and sort of focuses around things, and it seems to me lower, but again, I, I might be misunderstood on that, so I don't know if Tammy or Jen may want to clarify.
Thank you.
I'm not positive, I think, like you, it depended on the year and how many applied and, and were approved. So this 15,200 for next year is definitely more than we have been receiving, so at least that's good.
Yeah, so that's right, I mean, if we're, we're looking at the numbers here, next year, it's, it's bigger than what we have this year. So that, that's a bonus or benefit.
Okay, thank you for those answers, I'm finished.
Thank you, Marjorie, Mike, you have your hand up?
Yeah, it's just a question regarding retirement gratuities. I believe, I know that our board's taking into account, like this, this budget's 480,000. And I think that in about five years, there's probably going to be a surge of a lot more of that going out for a brief window of a few years. And I'm assuming the board has looked at all those years to come and has budgeted for those, that bump in, in gratuities, and they look at it year by years at a long-term graph. Just wondering, I know that, I know that the board has budgeted in the short term, I'm assuming that they've got some sort of a program that lays all that out, like typically, you know, you know, a lot of teachers retire between 55 and 60. I just know that there's a big pool of them going in about five to eight years, huge, so there's probably going to be quite an increase in that. I'm, I'm assuming that both you and Tammy have taken into account and have facts and figures, just general, regarding that topic?
So I'll answer that. It's not budgeted the way we used to budget, so we used to budget on a cash basis, and when it used to be paid. But now that it's, we've got the liability set up on our financial statements, it's, we get it, the actuaries liability, they'll tell us how much we need to budget for, and then we have that amortization of that original amount. So we know from year to year how much is going to be in our budget related to gratuities. We don't need to worry about who's going to retire when, because that liability is created based on more than just estimates, I'll say estimates to be simple, of when people are going to retire. And then it gets updated every couple of years based on actual retirements. But when people retire, it's more just bringing down that liability and it's not an expense, extra expense to the board.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any other questions, Susan? Yes?
Just, just one quick question on, on, I'm not sure what slide it's on, but the increase to the trustee association fee, and I, I did verify with Dave Shields this morning, I believe they are not increasing their fees this year. So I, I, I know we have our 43,000 normally, and it's up to 57, but I believe they're holding it at 43. So does that mean we can, you know, do something interesting with the rest of it, or it probably has to go back to the ministry? But I'm just wondering if you were aware of that?
No, and I would imagine, like, this would be for next school year, so maybe they haven't determined those fees yet for next school year. Because I think they, it was meant to match that funding. So I would imagine we don't get to spend it on something else.
Okay, thanks, I'm quite sure you're right, thank you, I just wanted to check on that.
All right, thank you, Marjorie, did you put your hand up again? Right, and then Dave? You're still on mute, Marjorie?
Thank you, I had lots of questions, and I'm finding them again, and this one is about the Indigenous languages allocation and the FNMI envelope together. And I'm wondering how much our allocation matches what, what we typically have spent in the last couple of years? Because I have the feeling we have a fairly advanced program going here, and I'm wondering if the allocation matches it, or if it is in fact more generous than we need.
So that's a, that's a tough one, that's where we're looking for some more information. We definitely spend, we definitely have more funding than we spend, but we don't know exactly how we're supposed to determine that. And whether it is, yeah, because we offer quite a few courses, but the funding is, is quite generous for those courses.
However, it does say that if we use any funding surplus beyond what's needed for the courses, we must report that. And I think that besides the actual formal courses, that we have quite a few programs that we have been funding in some of our schools. So will there be more, or how does this balance with what we've been spending is what I mean, besides the courses? But we don't know that yet?
We don't yet. We're working on that, so the, the way the allocate, what we need to do is, is drill down and see what amount of, what, what have we received and is spending as intended? And, and where is the gap? And then where might we have been spending other things that meet that criteria so that we could realign that funding and identify the funding? So that's definitely something that we're drilling into, and that took up a great deal of the conversations last week with regional members and provincial members, because we're all in, in the same boat, and in the technical paper, it just simply, the criteria is Indigenous learning. And so I'm hesitant to say we're fully spent in Indigenous learning, or underspent, or overspent, because it's not clear to me what qualifies as Indigenous learning at this time. So we're looking to, to, to get further information on that.
Thank you, I look forward to that. Thank you, Chair.
You're welcome, Dave Shields?
Yeah, just to answer Susan's question about the obstacle fees, I checked with the president. I checked with the president, Kathy Abram, about that. And I guess the increase has to do with labor, not really with OPSA. Because OPSA has not sent their invoices out yet, but it will be the same as last year.
Thanks, Dave. Mike, do you still have your hand up, or is that from previous? No questions, Mike? All right, thanks. Anybody else have any questions? I wanna see a few faces, so I don't know. I'm assuming not at the moment. Thank you again, Tammy and Jennifer, job well done. Especially getting all that information just last week and compiling it for us so quickly and efficiently. Thank you again. The next on the agenda would be the board retirement celebration, and I'll hand it over to Brent.
Thanks, trustee Bowlin. Appreciate that. So the retirement celebration, you know, as everyone can imagine, isn't quite, doesn't quite feel the same as it has in the past. You know, I think we could compare it to the graduation experience a little bit, and just another kind of casualty of the pandemic. But nevertheless, you know, when you're given lemons, try and make lemonade. So we're, you know, doing our best to, you know, honor the retirees of last year with this year's cohort. You may remember we had plans of having an in-person ceremony this year for both groups. That's obviously not going to happen at this point. So we have the, you know, the nice statues that are sculpted by the artist out of Kalabogie, Richard, I wanna say Barb, but that's not his last name, but you'll know who I mean.
Yeah, Richard Gell.
Thank you, thank you. So he's, we have the sculptures from last year. And we're putting those together with the certificates and the other, the booklets and all the things that retirees would get. And we're having them delivered to their houses. And then this year's group, we're actually getting the sculptures delivered to the schools. We have our fingers crossed that perhaps there can be something small at the schools or at the board office, wherever the retirees might be, maybe outside, that's approved by, you know, the local health authorities, but some way to recognize these folks in person, if it's possible. If it's not possible, we'll have to arrange for something else, you know, for that, for the folks to get their gifts in a little basket. So as I say, we're doing the best we can to honor our retirees in that way. We've had some conversations with John and Hannah about maybe some other things as we get closer to the end of June. It can be done through social media that might recognize people in a different way. So look for any of those conversations. The certificates, just a quick reminder, I think the certificates are in the director's office, so they'll need signatures. So Pino and Brian and, or the past chair for trustee Humphries, they'll need some signatures as well. I know Kelly has reached out to get some letters from trustees and from Pino, so if you haven't attended to those things, if you could do that, that would be much appreciated. We're still, we're still in good time, but if you do have a chance to do that, that would be great. I don't have numbers in front of me today. I apologize for that. In terms of how many we have to date, they'll continue to trickle in between now and the end of the school year. You know, not, not anticipate, well, we've seen, I think, a slight increase of what we might predict in terms of retirements because of the pandemic. So we'll see what this year brings in terms of numbers. And when I get those numbers, I'll make sure I send, I'll send that out to you guys so you have, so you have them. And you'll get copies of the booklets, so you'll have last year's retirees and this year's retirees. So, you know, for folks that you wanna reach out individually, I know everyone has people that they know in the system, you'll have their names and be able to do that if you choose. Glad to take questions, if there are any.
Any questions for Brent? Thank you, Brent. Appreciate it.
Yeah, no problem. Leo, nice to see everyone.
It's unfortunate that we can't get together, but yeah, we'll do the best we can, as you said. So thanks. The next item on the board for me is the Board of Trustees Self-Assessment Survey. Dave Kaiser is supposed to speak to that. I don't see Dave back in. So Brian, did you want to talk about that?
Absolutely. It's been two years since we had a Board of Trustees self-assessment. Last year, we passed on it because we were in the first throes of the pandemic. I guess we're getting used to it now because we're going to try to have this self-assessment. And trustee Kaiser's been looking at the instrument that we use. It was thirty-one questions long, and he decided, and trustee Humphries, myself, we certainly agreed that we can trim that down to twenty, so the essential, you know, questions to give us are a flavor of how we think, you know, we actually understand our role and how we actually operate. So that has been trimmed down to twenty questions. It will be sent to trustees shortly, next couple of days. And we hope to have them all back by, I think, the twenty-first, just going by memory. And then on the board meeting on the twenty-fifth, trustee Kaiser will just present the findings of the survey. So that's it in a nutshell. If there are any questions, hopefully I'll be able to answer them. Okay, so it should be, should be in your inbox then, very shortly. And I'll try to get it in as soon as possible, so that trustee guys will have an opportunity to collate all the answers.
Thanks, Brian.
You're welcome.
So that, that's it for open session. Unless somebody else has something else. Seeing none, then we'll go into closed session, so I need a motion to move into closed. Brian, thank you. And a seconder. Thanks, Dave. All in favor? That's everybody, so we're into closed session. So we only have one item on the agenda, and it's the Bus Transportation Consortium, and I'll hand it over to Jennifer Barnes.
Thanks again, Leo. Sitting there, taking a lot of your screen time today, so thanks for putting up with me and all of our updates. As you know, the consortium had made a decision to move forward with staggered bells in the Madawaska Valley family of schools, which would be the final grouping for this initiative that started way back in two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten, I believe, as a pilot project and working towards efficiency and effectiveness study results. So the consortium, in cooperation and collaboration with the schools, sent out some information and were hosted by parent council committees, where information was shared, questions and answers and concerns. The Killaloo family of schools, a community group was formed and were shared a different level of concerns at their parent council meetings. At both Killaloo Public School and at St. Andrews, there's been some formal letter writing to both member boards and the consortium, as well as, I think, to the trustees individually, or perhaps that was just by CC. All responses have been that the concerns would be brought forward and discussed, and then they responded to at a later date. Last week, I guess, May third, the Renford County Joint Transportation Consortium Board of Directors did meet in closed session to discuss staggered bells in Madawaska Valley. The request of the parent group is to delay implementation of staggered bells for one year, to have that implemented September twenty-two, rather than as planned September twenty-one. What I'm about to share with you is not public knowledge, but is a curveball to the situation in that a termination agreement has been executed between the consortium and one of the operators. And what that means is seven routes that were currently serviced this year will not have an operator. So it's, it's an added level to offering transportation within the county. Without staggered bells means we have seven routes without an operator. There was a good fulsome discussion amongst the board of directors, and the staff at the consortium were tasked with investigating and determining if the operator would be willing to reverse the termination agreement for that one year and finish out the existing contract. And if that's not the case, would any of the existing operators be willing to take up those seven routes for one more year, which would allow the routes to be serviced and the stagger bell to be paused for one year? So that is ongoing right now. That information, the results of that will be brought back to the Transportation Consortium Board of Directors. I think we're scheduling May twentieth, but I'm not sure the invitation has gone out yet. But the motion, as it was written and agreed upon, was if operationally feasible, the staggered bells implementation would be delayed for one year until September twenty-two. If not feasible, we would go ahead in September twenty-one. So moving forward, that would put the results of that investigation will be brought to the Board of Trustees of the consortium prior to both the public board and the Catholic board's next board meeting. So that information could then be brought back to the group at that time. So that's my update, and I'm more than happy to entertain any questions.
Thanks, Jennifer. Do we have any questions? I don't see any. So that concludes our, in our closed meeting. So I'll look for a motion to move out of closed. Thanks, Marjorie, and a seconder. Thanks, Susan. So we're out of closed. Does anybody have anything else to add? I just have one, one item to add. I just thought it was just interesting. So for OPSA, they did a spring survey. And one of the comments from the spring survey was from a trustee, he says, "Our team of trustees will not get along. Their personal animosity have grown to the point of vindictiveness. This is neither productive nor enjoyable." And I just had a big sad written next to it, and, you know, I just, I just wanna say that, you know, for us here and for our board, you know, that we do have a good working relationship, that we do respect each other, even though at times we may disagree, but we do, you know, tend to get along. So it's, I like to have this person maybe come and, I don't know who it is, but just to come and see what it is to have a good working relationship for a board of trustees. And then that also trickles to the director, you know, having a good working relationship, and it goes both ways. And then also with the senior men, you know, and I think that with a good leadership, you know, with the trustees included, senior men and the director. And then that trickles down then to all our staff, so I think we have a good organization. You know, within, you know, within Renford County, it certainly can be improved on and tweaked. But I think overall, you know, like, we're doing pretty good as compared to what this poor soul is doing, wherever they are. It's just, you know, sad. I just thought I'd, I just wanna bring that up to say that, you know, we're pretty lucky here. Yes, Brian?
I just wanted to echo, you know, what you said, that you said it so eloquently. We have a very strong, productive, engaging, you know, relationship among ourselves. And that extends to the, to our director, our senior men. We treasure our relationships with all of you. It's a pleasure to attend to media. We can hardly wait until we get back together again physically. But even virtually, it's just like going home to old friends. So we get a lot done for our students, our families, our communities. And it's so much easier when we get along so well and respect each other. So thank you very much.
And Mike?
Yeah, I'll just be brief. It's just unfortunate that those comments are floating around out there. I don't know how many boards are, what you might call simply somewhat dysfunctional, but with the TVO show, it's quite concerning that some of that's floating around out there. I just, it's unfortunate because I think that our board could be an example, and I think, you know, sometimes this, maybe the smaller rural boards, maybe it's easier. I don't know. I can't comment because I haven't worked for a large board. But again, I just echo what's just recently been stated. Thank you.
All right, thanks. And Dave Shields?
Yeah, I echo everyone's comments. I've been around long enough to see some boards that are very bad actors. And it's unfortunate that those are the ones that get all the press. And the ones that are actually functioning well just seem to slide below the radar. So those are very, very good comments.
Thank you. Oh, sorry, Brian, go ahead.
Just one last comment. When I made my comments about the, you know, the board, I wanna make sure that people understand, I'm not just talking about the elected trustees, but we have student trustees. We've had them for quite a number of years, and I've worked with quite a few since I came back onto the board with some of you back in twenty-fourteen, and they're strong, they're committed, they're just so easy to work with. And they have, you know, thoughtful, incisive, you know, comments and questions. And it's, so my comments earlier extend to them as well. So thank you very much. The iterations of student trustees right now, Jazlyn and Arbor, you follow them in a long tradition of really strong student trustees. I'm sure that will continue in the future. So thank you very much.
Yeah, for me, it's the same thing. It was just, it was including all trustees, including the student ones. So if there's nothing else, then I just need a motion to adjourn this meeting. Thanks, Marjorie, and a seconder, Dave. So the committee is done, so I'll hand it back to you, Brian.
Thank you very much, Leo. Okay, just moving right along, we are moving into a special board meeting. I'd like to call the special board meeting for Tuesday, May the eleventh, twenty-twenty-one, to order, and I'll ask trustee Susan Humphries for the invocation. And since we're virtual, we can all remain seated.
Thank you, Chair Morris. May we who are assembled here have a true understanding of the duties that are placed in our hands. We seek to have the wisdom to honor our obligations to the good of the residents of Renford County, to the parents, teachers, electors, and especially our students. May those who teach be ever inspired by goodness, and may the wisdom and knowledge which they impart to our students ever serve as a beacon to lighten their way. As trustees and administrators, we will work together with integrity, perseverance, and respect to the fulfillment of the trust bestowed upon us.
Thank you very much, trustee Humphries. Just moving on, are there any declarations of conflicts of interest on this item that you have in the agenda? Okay, seeing none, move on to the approval of the agenda. I need a motion to approve the agenda, and to do so, I need a mover and a seconder. Okay, Leo and Mike, okay, all those in favor? Okay, the motion is carried. The only item on the agenda, external audit committee member selection. We have an attachment that I'm sure everybody has read. I'll turn this over now to superintendent Jennifer Barnes, who seems to be carrying quite a heavy load today, maybe get some bonus pay from our director, but Jennifer, it's all yours.
Thanks, Chair Morris. And I'd just like to say I'm feeling bad for leaving facilities that I've had financed and transportation, and now I've got Thanks, Chair Morris. And I'd just like to say I'm feeling bad for leaving facilities that I've had finance and transportation, and now I've got audit committee. So I'll have to share some attention with Bill and his group another time. Thanks so much for holding the special board meeting. We do have an audit committee meeting tomorrow, so having this motion passed, if you are so kind to do so, we'll allow our newest member to attend. So just a slight recap, because I'm sure that you've read the report. The Ministry of Education does have a Regulation three-six-one dash ten that outlines the duties of audit committee members, the role of the committee itself, and how audit committee selection is taken care of. David Lindsay, a former external member who'd been with us for quite some time, had just reached a point where he had decided that it would, he's, he's moving on and would like more free time, I think, was the gist of it. He was kind enough, though, to source out a replacement. I met with Joshua Mickelson, and we had a great conversation. I was able to confirm that he does in fact meet the criteria, including that there is no conflict of in-interest. In effect, he has accepted the position, well, following the regulation, of course. Selection committee was struck, and that is the chair of the board, the director of education, and myself, the superintendent of business. We reviewed the application and did deem him as well to be a suitable applicant. So with that, the final vote of approval would come with the recommendation that the Rentriff County District School Board appoint Mr. Joshua Mickelson, CCEA, CBA, CMA, CCEA, to the position of external member of the audit committee effective immediately for a three-year term.
Okay, so Superintendent Barnes has read the recommendation, and I need a, is there any discussion? I need a mover and a seconder to accept this recommendation. Marjorie and Nick, okay, thank you very much. All those in favor? Okay, the motion is carried. And welcome Joshua Mickelson to the audit committee. And, and a special thank you, I know we've, Jennifer, you've already done that. A special thank you to David Lindsay. He has served well. I think it was what, ten years he's been on the audit committee. I was on it for a while myself. And I found him to be an excellent external auditor. He, he's a sharp, very pleasant young, young man. Everybody's young to me. And he, he really did a very good job. He kept everybody on their toes, and he did it in such a nice fashion. He will be missed, but I'm sure his replacement, which we very much appreciate that he sought out this young man, Joshua Mickelson, a graduate of Arm Project High School, I should, should add. So one of our own. And I'm looking forward to the audit committee just moving right along, as it always does, in its very efficient way. So thank you very much. Is there any new business? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. And Dave, a seconder. Okay, Susan, thank you very much. All those in favor? And this special board meeting for Tuesday, May the eleventh, twenty-twenty-one is now